Move on to public hearings. We have our first item under, item eight, hold a public hearing, waive the first reading, and introduce an ordinance to regulate the inspection, repair, and replacement of private Orangeburg pipe sewer laterals at the time of sale of residential property. Clara?
Honorable Vice Mayor, council members, good evening. At the last council meeting, staff presented to you the critical nature of maintaining the structural integrity of our sewer system in order for us to protect public health. At that time, at the last council meeting, also, staff seeked policy direction and feedback from you for the development of a ordinance regulating Orangeburg private lateral at the time of sale. What you have before you is the result of your feedback and policy direction given at the last council meeting. This ordinance would require for any property owner who, at the time of any transfer of properties built between 1940 and 60, to have a visual inspection, and if the private lateral is a Orangeburg pipe, then to have a video inspection, and if the pipe is defective, then will have to be repaired or replaced to the satisfaction of the city. This would add a approximate $290 permit fee cost to the property owners, depending on the type of action that they will need to take. If will be only just a visual inspection and the pipe is not Orangeburg pipe, that will be the lower dollar amount. But if the pipe will need to be replaced and have a final inspection, that will go up to $290. Also, in addition, will be the cost of repairing or replacement of the private lateral, which can be based on our best estimate between $3,000 up to, in some instances, up to $10,000. Was indicated in the staff report that staff is still in discussion with the baykeepers to discuss the possible credit for the program implemented already in the Glenview neighborhood for the replacement of the lateral. And they indicated yesterday that they would be supportive of, if that is your desire, to postpone the implementation of the ordinance for one more year, that basically you could consider alternative to establish the time of implementation or starting time of the implementation of this ordinance this April or next year. April is what is your wish or decision tonight. Depending on your approval, then this ordinance will be implemented this April or next April, or even the whole ordinance consideration could be postponed if that's what your desire is until next year. And between now and the implementation time, staff will have a aggressive education process and outreach to the real estate community and also to the property owner to make sure that the requirement of the ordinance will be known by everybody. This is my short presentation. If you have any questions.
Before we open it up to the public hearing, any questions by council staff?
Ken? Can you again reiterate, this has been an issue with real estate industry and as far as point-of-sale issues, whether it's sewer laterals, whether it's other items, you know, improvements in the home. And they've been against it, my understanding is because it holds up, you know, the process of transacting a house or purchasing or selling a house. You have changed, you've altered this ordinance to allow a six-month turnaround with, you know, with a bond, you know, to cover, you know, to cover the cost. So is this satisfactory to, in your understanding, is this satisfactory to that industry as far as the problems with point-of-sale ordinances?
Councilmember Ivana, how was indicated by us last meeting, most of the agencies on the peninsula has already this type of ordinance in place. And yes, based on the concern to not to hold up any transfer of property, in this proposed ordinance is included a 180-day delay if is requested from the time of the escrow with a 7,500 bond. If they already requested, that can be approved by the city. And that will minimize any possible impact on the property owners at the time of sale.
Okay. Do you want to add?
If I could just add, staff did, as part of the staff level work to prepare the ordinance for the council's consideration, we did contact and review other cities to understand in our region what is the, what is, what is the norm. And many other cities, as the director indicated, have such a program. They also have this six-month timeline opportunity. And we're not aware that there's been substantive opposition to the ordinance with its implementation in other communities. We are similarly not aware, having provided the public notice that's required of our initial efforts two weeks ago and tonight. We are similarly not aware of a significant concern among the real estate community. We think that we have addressed in a reasonable manner the legitimate concerns that real estate professionals and their customers may have.
Because basically, it's every, nearly every home, a majority of the homes in San Bruno are built during the time of when Orangeburg was, you know, predominantly installed in 40s and 60s. So, so every transaction will more than likely, if hadn't been replaced yet, will more than likely have, have that inspection and possibly a replacement.
Based on our information available, about 50% of the homes in San Bruno were built between that time period, between the 40s and 60s. Actually, mainly, most of the homes east, west of 280 and some other small area east of 280.
My last question is on the inspection process. How does one visually inspect whether it's an Orangeburg pipe or not? I mean, I understand, you know, contacting the building department and then your state in the ordinance, that the building official will come out, the inspector will come out and visually inspect on whether it's Orangeburg or not.
Was, my understanding discussing this issue with, internally with the building department and us, that in, oh, in the cases of the homes here in San Bruno, in most cases, they can make a visual determination of the pipe is Orangeburg or not. In some other instances, they have to, they have to open, actually, to open, to have a, to open the ground to see the pipe itself.
So, what I'm trying to get at is, I mean, if it's, if it's found to be Orangeburg, then the next step is to have video evidence and have it videoed. Wouldn't the video take care of that, all of that? I mean, it's just like, would seem like we have this extra step, and I'm not sure if that's necessary.
The reason why the visual inspection is first, to make a visual determination that the pipe is a Orangeburg pipe or not. It is my understanding that on the video, video itself, you cannot really say if the pipe is in good condition, you cannot really say if it's Orangeburg or not. You have to make a visual determination and basically, in some instances, potholing, that basically digging down to the pipe itself, if is not accessible without to pothole at that location. Was my understanding that in many instances, when the pipes coming out from the home, you can, without any potholing, you can see visually what kind of pipe is. If it's not, then they have to pothole at that location and to make a visual determination if it's Orangeburg or not. And they need to video inspect only just if the pipe is a Orangeburg pipe. If it's not, then they don't need to do anything.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, if I may just add one important point to councilmember Iberas' question. And that is that the, if the baykeepers agree to have a delay in the implementation of the ordinance for a year, that actually allows quite a bit of time for individuals in the community and real estate agents to prepare for the implementation of that ordinance. And I think that allows us to do more outreach and allows those individuals to check into their status and determine if they need to replace the pipe well in advance of, we've been putting the home on the market, for example. So, we're very optimistic that if we can conclude that agreement with Baykeeper, it really addresses the concern of a, of a point-of-sale ordinance. And in effect, this ordinance would become an ordinance that would have resulted in the repair and replacement of these pipes even before the home is sold and would have no impact on the, on the escrow or the sale process. So, we're hopeful that that's an advantage of the Baykeeper agreement if we can conclude it.
Well, the operative word is Baykeeper in this, because whether or not you're against or for point-of-sale issues, I don't see any other way that we can satisfy, you know, this, this issue without having the baykeepers, you know, attack the entire city. Thank you.
Irene?
Could you clarify for everyone, why the houses are, that we're targeting are between 1940 and 1960, not before, and not necessarily afterwards either?
The reason why in our agreement with the baykeepers were included only just homes built between this time period is the reason that the construction using the Orangeburg pipes was relevant during this time period, just during the World War II, when the material, any, wasn't any other material available. This was the most readily available material, and that's why this basically wood fibered, pressed-together wood fiber type of pipe was used during that time due to lack of other, more valuable material at that time. The name and this, unfortunately, the life cycle, this is a more, less durable type of material, and the expected, the life, the expected life for this pipe is up to 50 years. And what, any other pipe, like the plastic PVC type of pipes, they, life expectancy is longer. And right now, all of those pipes or Orangeburg pipes built between up to the 60s is over that 50-year of life expectancy. And the assumption is that most of them, they are damaged and need replacement.
Okay, so if you have a house that was built before 1940, you don't have to worry about your lateral so much? Is that basically the message?
I think everybody should be worried about their private lateral, that how, was discussed at the last meeting too, the integrity of the whole sewer system. The whole system works as a whole system. The integral, physical integrity is very important. But based on our agreement with the baykeeper, this was the highest risk of problem area, and that's why was included in our agreement. And based on your policy direction, this ordinance is crafted to target exactly that high-risk area and how was, what was included in our agreement with the baykeepers.
Okay, thank you.
Michael?
Thank you. So, regarding the age, I had the same question about why stop at that age. And so I understand that the Orangeburg is probably the most, or the weakest of all the materials that could possibly be in the ground. But I could see a lot of other reasons why we wouldn't want to limit this to just Orangeburg pipe, because the older pipes, I mean, there could be other, there could be settling in the ground that costs shifts in the pipes. The old cast iron could be corroded. I know there's clay pipes in places. I don't know if the, if the laterals are clay or not, but I know that we've had an SSO, at least one that I know of, that was caused by a hunk of clay pipe running down and lodging itself somewhere downstream. And there's also the fat soils and greases that go down the grain that could accumulate certainly over a period of many, many years. That could be an issue within those, that could possibly be caught if, if we were to extend this beyond just the, the Orangeburg years, if you will. I also see that we're, we're allowing like a five-year period where an inspection could continue over five years. And I'm wondering, within that five years, if there was an issue with, say, fat soils and greases, or if it's an area that maybe we identify that has an unusual amount of settling or movement. Is that, is five years really adequate then to say that that's, it's still going to be clear after that time? And then the 20 years after something's been replaced, again, it's well within the lifespan of current materials, but what kind of buildup could we get in that time period that might lead to the same situation? So, maybe the pipe's not deteriorated, but is it significantly clogged and create an opportunity for an SSO, which is really what we're trying to get after? So.
Councilmember, just to summarize the follow-up comment, yes, always, SSO cannot be entirely prevented. Always is possible to, because the SSO, even if a lateral will be replaced, that is no 100% guarantee. Based on general experience, is the agency's experience that after a inspection and repair of a lateral, you can expect that for the next five years, you will have no problem. Always can happen something. But based on the industry experience and the agency's experience, a repaired lateral will still function properly for the next five years. And also, that is the expectation that one will be replaced entirely, then for the next 20 years, a reasonable guarantee that, that will function properly. If meantime, any movement of soil, those are high-risk possibilities that will damage the pipe, or surface stormwater will undermine and will be damaged. Those hopefully will be monitored by all of the property owners, and those changes can be seen many times, even visually, and then you can act to prevent any further damage or any further SSO. I will just say that these five years and 10 years is included in most of the agency's ordinance around us, and is a consistency between how was, is included in this draft, in this ordinance with other agencies.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think if you agree that, you know, the, the clogging of these laterals could be significant within a number of years, I would still think that maybe we're allowing too much. I was kind of thinking this, sort of akin to what the DMV does with, with the smog checks. So, your car has to get smog checked every four years, and if you sell the car, you have to do a smog check, even if you just had a smog check done within a few months, you still have to get it done. And it's still a good idea, and it definitely helps keep the air clean, and this is something that could prevent SSO. So, I'm wondering if maybe more frequent, I mean, because we really are talking about a time of transfer. So, if something was replaced five years ago, but the house is being sold, I think it might make it easier to implement something that's more consistent. So, we're just looking at every time that there's a change of ownership, that we have this, that we need to check off. So, that's kind of my opinion on that. I also had a question about how the, the mechanics of implementing this, whether we're going to rely on sellers to sort of self-report the fact that they, they're putting their home on the market, and is there going to be any proactive effort on the city's part to go out and make sure that everybody who has a listing or has a sign on their lawn is actually going through the process? And are we staffed for that? And is that really part of the program that we're suggesting?
Certainly is. This is the minimum requirement of the five years included in this ordinance. Is, if your desire is to further restrict that timeframe, certainly is up to your decision to make. Was our intent to reach out to the real estate community, and the intent was for this ordinance to be implemented on, based on communication with the real estate community and the property owners to make sure that everybody must follow the rule, existing rules and requirement at the sale of the property.
Okay. But getting back to my question about how do we, how do we know? Are we relying on the homeowner, and is there going to be any proactive sort of, are we going to check listings? Are we going to check with the local Realtors?
If I could jump in and answer that question.
Connie?
May I?
Please.
Thank you. The, the answer to the specific question is no. It is not staff's intent to initiate some sort of a new program for checking real estate listings. A, a legal requirement by, implemented by ordinance in the local jurisdiction becomes a disclosure requirement for the real estate professional. So, it is their legal responsibility to know and advise their clients and adhere to local requirements in the transfer of property. So that we have reasonable expectation and ability to rely on those professional obligations to assure that those items, that customer, people who are selling their homes and who have that legal responsibility for disclosure with or without a real estate professional, that that is a sufficient safeguard to the integrity of the program. And it is not necessary, nor is it our interest to invent a new program whereby we will be going out and looking at, at real estate listings.
Okay. And final question on that, that satisfies our, our agreement with, with the Baykeeper?
It does.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the council or staff on this item? If not, when we close public hearing, there will not be another opportunity to speak on this topic. Anybody? Any action from council on closing public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, back to council. To, real quick, on the visual inspection, it was brought up about, my understanding, and I'm just going off some memory, is for the visuals inspection, if you do a video of, of the line, I think not only can you tell its condition, but you should be able to tell if it's Orangeburg or not. And I think, is that not always the case? Or obviously, it will give you the condition of it, but not the other, you're saying?
But, councilmember, was my understanding that on the video, you cannot say if it's the pipe in a good condition, you cannot make a distinction if the pipe is Orangeburg or not. Only to, only just through visual inspection.
Okay. There were a few things brought up by council here as far as more frequency or consistency, whether delay, how do we do the trust, verify per se. And I believe like the city manager indicated, at the time of escrow, it becomes beholden of the Realtor to make sure that this gets done. It gets a video inspection or some type of inspection and a report that quantifies that so it goes through with the documents. I know in other cities, the escrow is held up, and all of a sudden, there becomes a panic because the time window has become very short and they need to have the sale go forward. So, there are mechanisms that are already established in other communities that ensure that this process gets done. But I wanted to bring it back to my colleagues to see what they would like to do with this, with this item or any further discussion.
My understanding is the staff put in the ability for the seller to do a, a bond, so that they have six months so that they do not have to worry about holding up the sale. So, I think that's excellent job, and I think that should relieve anybody's anxiety about the timing. I understand what Michael's saying about the five years, but having had mine replaced, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a, I don't know if more than, or more frequently is particularly necessary. It's a big, it's a, it's a big commitment to, to do that more often, I think.
Well, it wouldn't be more often, it would be at the time of sale. But we're not grandfathering as far.
Well, no, I don't mean that. But I mean, so if you, if you get it done, four years later, you sell your house, and then the next person sells it in a year, that means it would be done two times in five years, or, you know, however thing. And I, I don't particularly think that's necessary. I, I'm, I'm thinking we might look at this a different way. We've never had this kind of ordinance before. I think it's a great first start. I think it, it does what Baykeeper wants us to do. I think it works toward eliminating as many SSOs as possible. So, there's nothing saying that we can't implement this. We can do, what Clara was saying about having a, a strong outreach to people, to explain to them why fixing their laterals, even if it's not Orangeburg, but keeping a watch on your lateral is, is something smart to do. And we, you know, we skirted around words, we've never said them, but if your lateral is broken, what happens is raw sewage goes into your yard, and that's what we're trying to prevent. So, we haven't said it in this whole conversation, this half an hour conversation, but that's what this is for, so that, you know, your dog walking through the yard, your kids walking through the yard, your yard itself doesn't get destroyed because of raw sewage. And that's, this is what it's supposed to prevent. So, I think this is great. I think we should wait till Baykeepers tells us if they'll use the Glenview houses for our credit or not, and use that time period to do an outreach for people, and then implement this. If in, you know, six months or a year, we find that it's not enough, then I think we can change it. But I think what they have here is, is a great first step, and that's my opinion.
Ken, Mike, Mike?
And I, I agree with Irene. I mean, new homeowner or, or someone selling their house, they, they want an assurance that, you know, that they're, they're not going to get called back or there's going to be some escrow problem with a, with a problem with the lateral. We've been inspecting, we've been requiring inspections of roof, roofs and certain items now. And, and I know there are other cities, for example, the city of Burlingame, has been requiring sewer inspections for at least 20 years on a tran, on a, on a transfer of ownership. And you can clearly see, when you drive up and down streets in Burlingame, you see the big four-by-four. the big, uh, four by four patch of asphalt in, uh, in the street of where they perform it. And it's not in a visual inspection, it's actually, uh, you have to pay to dig, uh, dig and excavate and, uh, and, and take a look. And I believe they have a period of, if you've had an inspection probably within five or 10 years, then you don't have to have another inspection. So that's probably s- a jurisdiction to, uh, to look into as far as how they've been doing it. And I believe they still have, it's, it's still, you know, it's still in force. But I think it's very important that, like Irene says, is that, and, and Michael is, is referring to is that, you know, that these property owners should, you know, not shy away from wanting to know for sure whether, you know, what the condition of their sewer laterals are.
Just regarding, um, Irene's original question about the, uh, the age span, um, do you guys see any reason to want to go, uh, older than 1940? Or, or stop, do we really need to stop at 1940, or do we just make it anything prior to 1960? Or move the age limits completely and just say anything older than 20 years has to be inspected?
Any comments?
I'm, I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how the industry or how inspectors or how, uh, property owners are supposed to, one, know how old their house is, and if it, if they, if it's clearly between 40 and 60, is it almo- are they almost guaranteed that it's going to be orangeberg? And is there a definite cut-up point as far as when orangeberg was not being used? Um, but I don't want to, I don't want to burden, I would rather recommend to the community, to the residents, to, to check their sewer laterals instead of making them inspect their sewer laterals, you know, whenever they sell a house.
Well, I agree. I would prefer a voluntary program.
Right.
But since we're going down this route anyway and it's required, let's make it a good one.
But, I mean, I, I agree with you. I mean, the clay pipes are probably just as bad, you know, on the older.
Irene?
Thank you. Uh, Clara, is there any data or any information you can give us about houses with laterals, uh, houses that were built before 1940? Is the, the incident of sewer lateral failure as great or greater than from 1940s to 1960s? Is it something we should be looking at, or should we go forward with this and then change it later? Or we have time to change it if we wait anyway?
Councilman Baro-Kanner, I don't have a, uh, specific data, uh, showing, uh, what is the, uh, rate of failure for, uh, lateral build between different time period. Certainly about, um, 80% of our whole system is still made, is, uh, used of clay material and, um, they, uh, in time is a logical de- degradation and theoretically, uh, older pipe will have a higher risk is, uh, uh, logical. Most of, uh, most of the agencies, uh, they are not specifying year of construction of the homes for private lateral regulation. Uh, the reason, uh, that is this proposal, what is in front of you specifying homes only ju- uh, home build during that time period, that how was, uh, negotiated with Bay Keeper in the most narrowly way possible. That's, was negotiated to minimize, uh, the least impact, uh, to our residents. But that's, this is the, uh, least impact, the minimum what, uh, the city, uh, should or could do, but certainly is up to you to make the decision from that minimum how far you want to go.
So, I, I tend to agree with Michael as far as the lower limit. If your house was built before 1960, then you should get your lateral looked at and, and the other restrictions are, that should apply. So I, I, I'm thinking that that's the best way to go. So let me ask you another question as well. Did I understand it correctly that you're saying we can do all the talking we need to tonight and then not enact this resolution until a year later or in six months until Bay, until we hear back from Bay Keeper? Or, uh, yeah, I was a little confused on that part.
Yeah. Let me, let me just clarify. Um, we are recommending that you complete the first reading tonight and subsequently the second reading at your next council meeting, but that you do take action to approve this ordinance, if you wish, with some modifications per your discussion. We're also recommending that you give us direction about the issue of whether, of the effective date of the ordinance.
Ah, gotcha. Okay.
Um, so we have already heard back from the Bay Keepers, and they have consented, agreed with the idea that the work that will be undertaken in the Cressmore neighborhood does satisfy a equivalent one-year worth of, um, orangeberg pipe, um, inspection and, and potential replacement.
Okay.
So the, that decision now rests with the city council, you, uh, but we do, as to the effective date of the ordinance, we do recommend that you take action, um, as scheduled, uh, currently to complete your review and approval of the ordinance.
Okay. Along with saying to enact it in April of 19, I haven't, April, wow, April of 2015?
You, yes, either in, um, 2014 or 2015, yes.
Okay. And, and I, if I may, it's, if I understand it correctly, if we delay a year, it gives us a further opportunity to do a more thorough job of educating people about what we intend to do and all those things. Okay.
Yes. So as the director indicated earlier in, in, uh, answer to a previous question, um, we were, um, highly mindful of the need to maintain maximum flexibility for the city council in considering any mandatory requirements. In other words, um, our, our agreement with Bay Keepers, uh, includes a requirement for presentation and consideration of this ordinance. But compared to other cities, we were, I would say, very effective in our negotiation to maintain the maximum parameters. That's how we got to the 40, uh, 1940 to 1960. Um, i- in the similar vein, uh, we went back to the Bay Keepers. We said, "Look, we have this other program going on. We're going to get a lot of sewer laterals replaced, we're going to get rid of a lot of orangeberg pipe." Um, you know, we need to, we need to be able to present that additional option to the city council. So that's the framework within which we're, uh, we have crafted the, the negotiations as well as the, um, opportunity for you to determine how you'd like to implement this program.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing minimally from, uh, staff is that you'd like us to waive the first reading and introduce the, um, the ordinance. And we also have that option, which sounds like the council may want to have it delayed for up to a year from its implementation, but also in that time, uh, having more information brought back to council that gives us more detailed information about if we were to go from anything prior to 1960, or no?
Oh.
Yeah, I'm asking. That's what I've heard, uh, collective out of the council.
I, I don't, I don't think, I, I personally don't need any more information. I think what Clara said is absolutely right. The older it is, the more chance it has to fail, especially if, if it's been a house that's, hasn't been sold in, you know, it's been sold in the same ownership for 50 years or whatever. So I, I, at this point, unless it's, would like to recommend that we change the ordinance to say any house that was built before 1960, and then have the effective date in April 2015 with the understanding that we do outreach to the communities about why we are doing this and how, and how it's going to be implemented. That's what I'm looking at.
Ken?
Yep.
Yes, Clara?
Councilmember Baro-Kanner, if I can ask for clarification, that, uh, that would target all of the, how the ordinance is crafted now, and the reason is between 40 and 60, that specifically includes only just orangeberg pipe. If the pipe is not orangeberg, does this ordinance doesn't require any inspection of that pipe or any replacement of the pipe, only just if it's orangeberg? The question is, if you intend then to extend the, uh, requirement of this ordinance for all pipes, for all homes built before the 60, but that will be a change in the program. If, uh, you are targeting only just orangeberg pipe, then extending the timeframe is not effective in the sense that probably very highly unlikely that any home built in the Tony's or Torey's will have orangeberg pipe. That material wasn't used, uh, before World War II.
Okay. For me.
Yes, please.
So how do we, okay, I understand what you're saying, and I understand to change it, we, we would have to recraft the whole thing and do all that stuff. Is there a way to add to the ordinance so that we include pipes that are, that include houses that were built prior to 1940 without, I mean, can we add a paragraph that says, "In addition to the Greenberg pipes, any homes that were built before 1940, regardless of what kind of pipe was used, need to have their laterals inspected at point of sale"?
No, not going to do that.
Everything is possible. And yes, would be possible to add, or say additional, uh, to expand the program. I would defer to, uh, Mark Zaffarano to say, uh, this then would be a substantial change to the draft ordinance and would, probably would be my expectation that would be substantive change to the ordinance, uh, would require to be reintroduced, but I will, I would defer to, uh, Mark.
Because, and, and I'm going to ask staff, because in essence, that would be a, a huge change to what we have here presented to us. In addition, I know staff's concern is us meeting the minimum requirements that we have obligated ourselves with Bay Keepers, which this does that and meets it under their timeline. And if we delay it for a period of time up to a year, it doesn't mean that it can't come back, revisit it and modify it at that time with any additional information as far as the year, as far as the type of material. Um, is that correct?
Yes, I think you're correct on both counts. On, on the last one, certainly, uh, you could come back and revisit the ordinance at, at any time during the, during the year. And then you're also correct that I think if we were to make that type of change in the ordinance based on your direction, we should bring it back for reintroduction because it does affect a number of provisions in the ordinance.
Okay. Well, Irene's still, she's still going.
Well, no.
She's still going.
Some days I do, some days I don't. Um, I, okay, so I understand all the things you said, and I would not want to delay this unnecessarily and mess up what you guys have written. So I'm willing to wait and then revisit it at another time.
Could I just offer you another suggestion here? Um, I, I don't think the city attorney meant to suggest that you would need to defer your consideration. Um, the, the recommendation from staff is that the change you're talking about would be a substantive change that would simply require repeating the first reading, public hearing, and then a subsequent second reading. It would delay your action essentially by two weeks. I would recommend that if the city council is interested in strengthening the ordinance, and as the director indicated, um, expanding the program, that you direct us to do that now. We would bring the ordinance back to you on the 25th. It's not a huge change. We have plenty of time to make the revisions you're discussing tonight, and that you would then consider it again, uh, for first reading, subsequent second reading, and then with an effective date of April of 2015. That approach would be consistent with what I, I heard your suggestion to be.
The irony here is that if the Bay Keepers didn't stick their nose into our community, we wouldn't be discussing this. I don't, I, I am not in favor of making the ordinance stricter. I'm not in favor of having the ordinance period, but I realize that the Bay Keepers have us. And so if we don't follow at least to their minimum requirements, uh, they're going to come after us again. And so I'm, I'm fine with the way it's laid out now. Um, we can discuss at a future time as far as, uh, you know, making the ordinance stricter, but, uh, I'm, I'm just not in favor of that. I, it's, you know, we've gone all these years, and people should know that this is, I mean, and we can do a community outreach, and we can let them know the importance of, you know, of checking their sewer laterals and, but we can't, I just don't believe, it's our, you know, it's our job to, to make them do it.
Yeah, I'm, uh... I'm prepared to move forward with what we minimally have to do because we're obligated and required. Uh, we can always bring it back and make changes to it, uh, but for, for now, I'm prepared to go forward with what we have now with the, uh, with it being delayed.
I'm going to make a motion that we waive the first reading.
Do you second?
Sir, as, well...
This is to waive the first reading.
Motion to waive the first reading?
We ought to close the public hearing.
Yes.
I'll second it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion fails, two to two. So with that city attorney, does that mean that, uh, I, does that mean we have to read it in its entirety? Or does that just means that it, since it failed, it has to come back?
I would recommend that, uh, before taking the time to read it in its entirety, you might want to take a straw poll to determine if there is going to be a majority or three votes for introduction of either this ordinance or some variation thereof.
Because if we have to read it, then either Irene or Michael gets to read it. It's in its entirety. So, um, the city, yes, by it failing, we would have to read the, uh, the ordinance in its entirety, that is a requirement, which I think we might give to the city attorney or city clerk. I don't know who.
Point of order. What?
Ken?
Are, are we not, we, we, we're, we're voting to waive the first reading, doesn't mean that you're voting to approve the ordinance.
Correct.
So let's not read the ordinance and then, you know, and then have the ordinance fail.
I think that's why the city attorney's asking for a little bit more, uh, direction from council so we can avoid that.
The, the point of clarification then? If we, if we, if it turns out that there is not three people to approve the ordinance, however, if it's read or not, well, let me, let me see if I can ask this question the little correct way. Do we need to read an ordinance that will not be approved?
No.
So if we, so if the next step is, if this, the vice mayor says, "Is this, is this ordinance going to be approved?" And it gets, it's a two to two straw vote, then we just stop here? Is that correct?
I, I would make a secret, I think we've already been down this path once, so why don't we go ahead? If my colleagues would go ahead and go ahead and waive the first reading, we can have the, uh, introduction of the ordinance. It would potentially at this point fail with a two-two, which then would have to come back. Am I, am I incorrect?
Yes, of course, we would, we would recommend that there be some direction as to what changes would be made in the ordinance between now and the time that it comes back for introduction.
Right. And we already had experienced this earlier this year when we had a two-two, so the ordinance would either need to come back at a later time, or we need to re, direct staff to come up with some various alternatives.
Okay.
So, um, do we want to go ahead and reconsider waiving the first reading?
Restated. Move to waive the first reading?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so that has been waived.
To the chair, I'd like to introduce the ordinance for adoption.
City clerk?
Councilmember Ibarra.
Aye.
I'm, I'm sorry. Hold on. You're introducing the ordinance, it's not for adoption, you're introducing the ordinance.
Yes.
Right, okay. Just, just clarifying for the record.
Councilmember Ibarra.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
No.
Councilmember O'Khanor.
No.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye. So there's a two to two. It fails.
Yep.
So obviously, is there any additional direction that council wants to give to staff on this or has staff quite heard enough to where they have direction and we can bring it back when we obviously have our mayor back?
To the chair, what I would like, and nothing, nothing to do with what my colleagues want to add to the ordinance, I'd like a little more discussion on how a resident is actually going to be faced with this inspection process. Whether it's a whole scenario where you walk right through it with, you know, and that you're going to determine that you're going to sell your house and that what, what exactly is the Realtor going to have or the agent going to have to present to the homeowner? And how, you know, how they're going to proceed with that? In addition, nothing against staff, but I don't think we've got enough information on this orangeburg and, and what, to, to its extent. Now, if you can clearly tell me that certain subdivisions in this community are orangeburg, like Glenview, like certain Crestmore neighborhoods, fine. But now if you're going to certain areas that were 60 years old, where are we at? And I don't want to be told that it's what other jurisdictions have said and things. I really would like a, as professional of an opinion or report from someone that lives orangeburg, you know, or knows it, you know? And so if we can have something like that, because all I know now is that it was built, it was used within a certain timeframe and it, and it came from New York. So, and it's got this certain, certain deterioration rate. So I, I just think that there's more information out there for us to, to be able to tell our, our homeowners.
Is that enough direction and anything else? Connie? Anything?
Yes, I think we have enough direction. We will have to figure out what to do with that and we will return at the next meeting.
Yes.
But we have, we have enough direction.
Thank you.